Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order the January 7th Springford Area School Board of Directors Workshop Meeting. Can we please rise for the pledge?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Saturday workshop and ICS discussion and presentation. Before we get started with announcements, Mrs. Bicker, could we please have a roll call?
Yes, all board members are here except for Mrs. Zazowski.
Who I believe is on Zoom. Can we confirm that? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, as far as announcements go, the board did meet this morning for a professional development session, information sharing session that was delivered by Tina Valetto of the MCIU. Just want to thank all of the board members for attending that. It is no easy feat for us all to get together and, you know, engage in continuing education. So, thank you very much. And with that said, we are going to be moving right into the reason why we are here, which is our discussion and updated presentation from ICS. So, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. If you don't mind, I'm actually going to walk towards the board and just kind of, because I might have to point at some things, because it does get a little complicated, some of the stuff we're talking about. That's all right. I didn't talk to your IT and video people. They said they could catch, pick me up anywhere. Is that, is that okay with everybody? All right. Going to switch, I'm just going to switch over to the other mic. Are you awake? All right, so, let's, oops. I don't know if this is going to work here. Sorry, my little clicker's not working. This. Oh, there we go. Well, there's the agenda. So, you know, when this started, we were just, we were talking about Spring City. And, you know, we've been going through a year-long planning process, really facilities-based process, to kind of get everybody up to speed on what's going on and then get everybody prepared if there's going to be decisions to be made. So, some of this presentation is going to be, oops.
May I stop you?
Yes.
Because it is a little bit faint. I don't know if anyone else is having problems hearing, but maybe just keep the microphone closer.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is this, is this good? All right. So, some of this is going to be review, and then some of it is going to be kind of new information. And remember, this is just information only, and this is information to make the best decision for Spring City. So, just where we've been over the last three-plus years is we started way back in 2019 with a condition assessment of all your facilities. That's, that's what, what do you need done at every building? How much does it cost? What could a potential plan be? We moved into a demographic study and a capacity study. That's telling you, how many students are you planning for and how many do you have room for? And then we did a very big combined facilities study where we, we put a report together, couple hundred pages, submitted that to the district, got tons of information on anything you might want to see about your facilities. Fast forward, there's been, you know, there was COVID, so, you know, we had some pauses for that. And then we've been going through strategic planning ever since then. So, just a little, little background, and I know many of you are already aware of this, but this is the age of all your buildings. So, you can see, most of them were built in the 60s with a whole nether wave built in the 2000s. And then you have one that was from 1930, and that's 8th Grade Center. And I call that out because that, that's kind of in what we're talking about today. Number of years since renovation. So, what I typically tell boards or schools is, when you get about to 20 years, you should start planning for what you're going to do for a building. So, 20 years from a major renovation is when you should start planning. Usually by 25 years, you should start, you know, making some decisions or addressing those buildings. And you can see you have a few buildings kind of poking over, over that line. Now, one of the things that we like to do, and if I'm moving too fast, just tell me, we like to use metrics. So, we use a metric called facility condition indexing. And what that does is that takes all the need of a building and divides it by what it would cost to rebuild that building. And what that does is it gives you a scale. And if you look, from 0 to 20% is good condition, 20 to 40 is fair, and above that is poor. You have no buildings in poor condition, which is great, you know, that's fantastic. But you do have some buildings that are kind of poking into that fair and getting really near that poor condition. So, you know, this is one of the ways that we help prioritize which buildings need attention. So, you can see Spring City rises to the top. So, two things with Spring City. One, it's got a lot of maintenance that needs deferred maintenance, needs to be addressed. Two, it's also over capacity. So, it kind of gets the first slot of priority. The next one is 8th Grade Center. It has a significant amount of need that needs to be addressed, and it's one of your oldest buildings, and its facility condition index score is, is kind of in that middle of the fair. Now, there's a couple other buildings that are poking up through there, but they're being addressed in other ways. So, some of the, some of the things that Mr. Hunter is taking care of, some of the things that the Giza Project's taking care of, as well as some of these other buildings. But these are, these two are the primary buildings we're looking at right now. So, just a little bit about enrollment projections. And this shows the district enrollment projection from the last report that was done in September of '22. So, what you can see is that you have projected to go up a little bit, district enrollment, and then go down. There's some mega trends that are, that are at work here. So, people have less children, you know, that's a trend. But here, you have a lot of construction, a lot of new development. What you see in this, this yellow line is where your, where your enrollment would be without construction in your district. So, construction in your district is actually making up for the mega trend of people having less kids, which is great. That means people are moving to your district, they like your district, obviously. So, that's, that's a good trend. Something to keep, to be aware of, this orange cone, with five, within five years of when you do a demographic, it's very accurate, because the children have already been born, the permits are let for whatever development, so it's very accurate. Now, from five years forward, it's a little more, it's a little less accurate, because those children haven't been born, you're guessing at the trend, but it's still informative. So, that just gives you a big snapshot. What are some of the things that we know? Well, in the Spring City catchment, there's a lot of development. It's being built right now, if you go by it, and it's the kind of development that brings children. So, it's, you know, three- and four-bedroom houses in that right price range, so we know that there's going to be more children coming, more students. When you look at that through metrics, the estimate is about 118 kids, more kids will come to Spring City over the next several years. They don't all show up at once. Obviously, they come in at different times. So, this, this graph kind of shows what's the capacity at Spring City. That's about 128. And then what is the expectation for children? It's 164. So, you can see, you have a capacity problem. You don't have enough seats for those kids that are coming, hence why, right as it says at the top, hence why something should probably be done. Another way to look at this is we, we take all of the capacity within the district, look at the targets, you know, what, you can, just little side note, you can never operate a building, very hard to operate a building at 100% utilization. That means that every seat is taken by a child. Why is that? Because children don't show up at your door in perfect packages of 24 students, 25 students, 26 students, or whatever your target class size is. They, they don't. And then they're also using specials and art rooms and everything else. So, it's almost impossible to program perfectly. So, there's targets that you use. For elementary schools, the, the target is 90%, middle schools 85% utilization, high schools 85. Different reason for high schools, a lot of electives, a lot of movement. But, coming back to the chart, so what you can see is, you actually have negative 30% utilization at the target time of year '26, 2026. So, you're going to be short. Now, you can see in some of your other elementary schools that you have excess capacity. So, that, you know, just keep those things in mind, there's some capacity elsewhere, but to use that capacity, you'd have to redistrict. So, that's always challenging. So, just keep all that in, in the, in the head as we move through this. So, if you were going to address what we see as, as problems at Spring City, we saw four options. So, one, you could close it, right? Not a great option, a lot of times, but you could. That would be one of the options. Two, you could address just the infrastructure. So, remember I was saying there was a lot of deferred maintenance, roofing, HVAC, you know, all those kind of things that are warm, safe, dry. You could just address that and not worry about capacity. Third option, you could renovate that building and add to it. So, that would be addressing all that warm, safe, dry, plus more space for more children. And then fourth, you could always demo it and build new. You know, then, then you've got no limitations, it's, it's a brand-new building. So, what we're going to do is just walk through those feasibility options. And the first one was close Spring City. Now, what would that do? You could do it, there'd be zero children there. Caveat, you'd have to take and redistrict all the children to all the different buildings so you could take advantage of some of that excess capacity. So, that you would have to do before you closed a building like this. And there's a bunch of other reasons why you might not want to do that as well, but we'll get to those on the pros and cons, which is right here. So, if you were to close the building, what are the advantages? So, obviously, you would, you would not have to address that deferred maintenance that's built up over years. You would save some operational costs running the building, and you, you may have the ability to repurpose that, that piece of property. What are the disadvantages? So, you would eliminate a neighborhood school, and a lot of school districts like neighborhood schools. There would be a major transportation impact, because those, those kids would have to be distributed elsewhere. Redistricting would be required at that point, obviously. And I, the last one is, it may limit the future options that future boards may be able to make. And, and that's where this kind of secondary portion of this, that's where this came from, is like, well, what, what are those limits? And, and what does that look like? So, that's the information that we're going to have moving forward here. So, if you were to address just the infrastructure, remember that's warm, safe, dry, you're looking at about $10.75 million to do that. And that, that would not be moving walls around or changing any educational programming or anything like that. It's just those infrastructure systems. So, the advantages of just addressing the infrastructure, infrastructure systems would be, you know, obviously, you don't have to build for capacity, so you're saving a little bit of money there. Disadvantage is it doesn't really improve the educational program, it doesn't address the capacity issue, because you still have all those additional children coming, it limits the space in your existing elementary schools. So, if you were to only do that, you still would have to redistrict some of the students out of Spring City, because there's, there's so many more coming. So, in my opinion, not, not the best option. Now, option three would be reconfigure. So, this is not just warm, safe, dry, but take your existing footprint and make it fit better educationally. Because right now, it's, it's been modified over years, and it's, it's maybe not using the space in its best ability. So, we'd reconfigure that space, plus the warm, safe, dry, plus add additional capacity to address the future students that are coming. To do that, you know, we have about $17.4 million to do that project. Now, in that, there'd be some new FFE, furniture fixtures, equipment, because usually when you have a new space, districts like to make, have new, new FFE with that. You don't have to, but it, it does look nicer. So, we don't need to go over this. This is, this is if you were to choose that, but that's not important right now. So, advantages and disadvantages. So, this option would improve your educational environment, it would fit better with your existing program. It addressed the capacity issue, maintained that neighborhood school we were talking about. We had positive environmental impact, because you're reusing infrastructure instead of, you know, just demolishing it. Disadvantages, there will be some limitations within the footprint that's there. So, you, you can't completely reconfigure the building, you know, the cafeteria's going to be where it is, the gym's going to be where it is. You can maybe expand upon it, but it's not going to, you're not going to move all those things. It would require a one-year relocation of students. So, you know, to do that project would, would require student relocation, and there could be some municipal land development that we would have to do since we're adding space. Last option is really demo the existing building and build new. You know, that's your clean sheet of paper, you get to build whatever you want. Obviously, it's your most costly option as well, not to mention, you know, it's going to take longer. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but it's certainly an option. Advantages of building new, you know, obviously, there's no limitations. Disadvantages, clearly cost. And the other one is it would require a two-year relocation of students, not one. So, when we, when we tried to take all of this, and I'm sorry, I know this is an eye chart, but a lot of times, it's a lot of information, and, and what we tried to do is, is fit it on one sheet of paper in as logical manner as we could. So, what we did is we just kind of put all the, the things that we were trying to address in this left column, we put the options here across the top, and then how they are addressed, we just did red, yellow, red, yellow, green, because it's, it's easiest sometimes. So, you can see, you know, different options address different things, you know. Option two doesn't address a lot, addresses a little. Option one, you know, obviously, NA, because if you're closing it. And then option three and four address things differently as well. This was, yeah, absolutely. Sure.
Sorry. So, if option one, just, and again, clarifying question, NA would, to me, indicate that it's not being addressed?
Um, well-
Yes? When, in fact, it would be addressed, but in another building.
Yeah, and it's, it's really hard to, it's hard to do that, because I don't know what building they're going to. Like, we haven't figured any of that out, so-
Right.
Some, some of that would be, yeah, it would be addressed, because you would, those children would go somewhere else, and whatever, whatever limitations were at that somewhere else would, would exist there.
Okay, and that's, and I just, because to me, it, it, it seems as though they wouldn't be addressed when in fact they kind of would.
Yeah, it's a good point. Very, very good point. It's, it just would be hard for us to grade them, is maybe the better way. So, I could have put something else there, maybe, would have been a better. This, this was actually a slide that was put together by the administration, because they had a, a recommendation. But what they were leaning towards in their professional pen was option three. And there was a whole lot of reasons for that. I don't know if you want to do what you did at the other meeting, or you just want me to go through them.
I, I could, very briefly, I mean, this is again, review. We, we thought option three was the best option, because it does maintain the neighborhood school. When we talk about educational parity, which is, the environment is a little different at Spring City than it is at our remaining six elementary schools, that does allow us to bring Spring City up to the same standard as the remaining six elementary schools. The extra 7,000 square feet does allow us to account for any growth that is going to be coming into that building. And it does keep our options open in terms of full-day kindergarten. So, when our administrative, when we talked administratively, it didn't seem practical to put a new building in there, once we saw what the more, the, the, maybe the more accurate projection of numbers of students coming in. A new building didn't seem to make a lot of sense, but adding on to our existing building did seem to make more sense whenever you can create a, a new-ish environment in there. So, that was, option three felt like it was, it was the best option. Option two, as Phil mentioned, was really more about just updating the infrastructure, and you wouldn't see a different educational experience at Spring City. And again, we were looking at that educational parity for that building as compared to the remaining six.
Perfect, thank you. And gave me a chance to get a sip of water. You know, I was thinking about doing an exercise here, but I'm not sure if this format's great. I was going to ask a little bit about how, you know, how facilities decisions kind of fold into your comprehensive plan or your vision for the future, but I don't know if this is going to be the format to do that.
I don't think this is the format to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree. When I, when I heard workshop, I thought more like hands-on workshop, so my, my mistake there. So, what I, what I think I'll do is I'm just going to roll into the second part of this presentation, and I know it's Saturday, so people don't want to be here for three hours, so I'm just going to move into that, unless everybody needs a break or anything.
My, my only ask here is, you don't gloss over anything. I would rather you go through the presentation in detail as it is projected on the screen.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, so, all of that was review, right? I know I presented that to the board. I don't know if everybody was here to see that, but it was certainly presented earlier. So, as I said before, there are a lot of moving parts. And this is where, you know, as, as I was thinking about sitting in your seat, I would want to know a little bit about how those moving parts work together before I made a decision, even on the very first part. That gets a little tricky, because you get, you get into all this optioning and what-ifs and everything else, but we did our best to try to play out with the administration, we've been at this for almost nine months. What could potentially the next step in this plan look like? By no means are you making any of those decisions. That, that's not the point of any of this. It's really just to kind of play out what your options are as you move forward, and then how does that impact your Spring City decision so that you can make the best decision? So, as we were looking at this, we were thinking, okay, you know, you're, we were looking at Spring City only, and one of the options was to close it. So, as we're thinking about that, I'm like, well, is that, would that be the best use of that, of that excess capacity? Or are there other ideas that could, that could maybe be a two-for, you know, two-for-one kind of thing? So, we started thinking through it, and I was thinking, okay, well, maybe, since 8th grade is also in, you know, in your future to address, maybe, maybe if you were considering closing a building, that would be a better building. Or none of them would be a better building, I don't know. But we want to play all those out, so that you can see. If we were to do that, what, what else could come out of that? We could potentially change your grade configuration, so maybe make it a little tighter, because you have a lot of transitions. Not that that's, there's, anything's bad with that, but, you know, I think the preference would be less in a lot of cases. And then the full-day K thing is certainly not something I'm asking anybody to consider, but it is just a discussion that's happening across the state for a lot of the school districts that have half-day K. Doesn't mean that you need to do anything, but just, let's look at the impact of that and how all these things fit together. So, that was the thought process in this next, this next portion of this. So, we made some assumptions. So, the assumptions are exactly what I said. You're not making all the decisions, you're making a decision at a time. So, first decision would, would be, you know, what would you do with Spring City? That'd be it. And that's really the, the decision that's in front of you. And then it's like, well, you know, what, how could that impact the district later when it comes to 8th grade, or, or any of the other grade configurations that we could put together? And then after all that, in the very far future, if you wanted to consider full-day K, what would that look like with your space, with what we know today? Remember that, too, because, you know, we don't have perfect crystal balls, but we can make the best assumptions today with the information we have. So, this is where it gets a little challenging, so. And I, I think I handed these out so you could, you could see them. So, as we were building options, we were thinking, okay, well, what could the district look like? So, I'll go through the very top option, just to kind of, kind of walk you through how you would, how you would read this decision matrix, if you will. So, I, I started with, you know, kind of what the, the preference was administratively, which was renovate, add to Spring City. And then I worked through our team, I don't say "I," I apologize, the team, all of us, administration and everyone, worked through what could the district look like after that. So, I'll just stick with the top. So, if you say we were, for whatever, you were going to renovate, add to Spring City, we know that that cost is $17.4 million. If you were going to choose to just maintain your existing grade structure, configuration, that's K4, 5.7 at the flex, 8th Grade Center, 9th Grade Center, 10.12. So, if you were going to maintain that in the future, you were going to have some decisions on 8th grade, right? So, at 8th grade, let's just assume you're, you're having the same configuration, you could just renovate 8th grade with kind of that warm, safe, dry thing that I was talking about. about. That's in the $30 million range. Or you could, sorry, I called it refresh, or you could renovate the whole thing, the way that we're talking about, where you change the educational space, update the finishes, all those other things besides warm, safe, dry. So all those other items. And that, that would be in the $50 million range. Now remember, we're not talking about making any decisions about that. I'm just giving you information. So then if you followed that path, what would happen with the district if you chose at some point to go to full-day K? Well, with all of that configuration, with what we know today, you would still be able to do it. And you would not need additional space. You would, you would probably need to redistrict. And in several of these steps, you might need to redistrict. Always something to consider. Redistricting is very painful, anytime. But this is how the decision matrix, if you will, works. So I can walk through the second piece. Let's say you were gonna renovate add, keep your current configuration, and instead of refresh or renovate, build new. Just demolish an eighth-grade center, build a new eighth-grade center. 64 to 70 million dollars. If you at some point wanted to do full-day K, you still don't need major construction. So that, and then you, you kinda go through each one of these as different options. Did I lose everybody? No. That's awesome. All right. I'm gonna go through the next level, because this, this one's pretty important. So, again, if you were choosing to renovate, add, Spring City, and then, for some reason, you were thinking, you know what, we might wanna consider changing the configuration of the grade. What might that look like? We could take fifth grade and push it into the K4 structure. Because remember, you had a little bit of capacity left there. Now, it wouldn't all fit. That's the interesting thing. You would still have to build some more square footage. So let's just look at what that looks like. So if you were to move there, push fifth grade into that K structure, you would have to add about 21,000 square feet to your existing elementary school buildings. And we haven't solved for where that would be, but we solved for the amount of space you would need. And that would cost between 12 and 14 million dollars. Today's dollars. All of these are in today's dollars. Because we don't know when these decisions may happen, and they will all escalate to the future. Because, you know, inflation is what it is. So then, your future eighth-grade decision, you would sunset it, right? Because now you don't need it. You have K5, 6-8 at the flex, 9, 10-12. So you've gotten rid of one grade transition, potentially. This is all high-level. So then, at that point, if you did choose at that future time to do full-day K, you've kinda used up all your capacity at this point. So now, to, to, to put full-day K into the district, you need to add 30,000 square feet somewhere in the elementary schools. Preferably, you're gonna have to add it onto each one, because you're gonna need another K-classroom. There's all kinds of ways to solve for that, but we know approximately the square footage. The other thing we solved for in this future full-day K is there was a study done that if a district offers full-day K, there's plenty of parents who choose to go to a private school for kindergarten only. And if you look at your demographics, you'll see you have a much smaller kindergarten class than you do first-grade class. So, you know, if you were gonna, if you were gonna offer full-day K, you would have to also account for those other kids that would maybe start here. Now, the good thing about that is there, if they're going to a charter school or something, that's money coming out of the district. If they're going to a private school, it's less of a concern. Separate discussion. So the last kind of tree or leg that we looked at is, if you were gonna renovate, and you were gonna change the grade configuration, and you wanted to make it K3, 4-6, make a 7-8 center, 9, 10-12. Now, you didn't solve for the number of transitions, but you've done something different. You made a, a kind of an early learning center. When we looked at that, it really is a costly option. It certainly depopulates the elementary schools. But when you renovate and add to kind of an eighth-grade center, it gets very costly. Or if you demolish and build, same thing. Move over to full-day K. There, you don't need any major construction to offer it, space-wise. All of these have way more than just space considerations. There's operational considerations, there's teachers, there's all kinds of things. So we were just giving you a look at the facility side of this. Same tree. I'm not gonna go through step-by-step of this tree, but unless you'd like me to. Clinton's giving me the yes. The yes means yes. All right. All right, so, same tree, close Spring City. So, you know, now, now our first step is close it. Now, I'll go through the top piece first. Let's say we're gonna close Spring City, and we're gonna maintain grade structure. Same pathway. So now, when you get to eighth-grade center, you still have those options. You can refresh it, warm, safe, dry, renovate it, and that's the same two numbers, 30 to 50 million dollars. You could demolish it and build new. Obviously, a very costly option, and actually, probably not technically feasible, because I don't know where you'd build it, but we just ran through the option. 64 to 70 million. As you move to full-day K from either one of those, what you've done is you've used a little bit of excess capacity to close Spring City. So you are going to need to build, when it comes to full-day K at that point, about 24,000 square feet. And that's got some dollars with it. Now, if you were to go back, close Spring City, do the same consolidation, so move fifth grade into your K structure, repurpose for 6-8, then 9, 10, 12. All of a sudden, you can't fit as many kids, because you've used up, you no longer, so you, you got rid of Spring City, so that square footage is not available. So now, you've got to build almost 50,000 square feet to house those students, to push them in fifth grade. So think about that. You're almost closing one, and then rebuilding it bigger. So it's, you're kinda moving things around. And, and the more you, you work with this and look at it, the more it will be like, okay, you know, light bulb, okay, I see how the, the, the capacity is getting used. So let's just stick with that. So that 49,000 is between 27 and 34 million. And why is it wide? Because there's a lot of site work when you're gonna rebuild 50,000 square feet onto your existing sites, that's gonna have to be addressed. Using that, that same process, you would close eighth grade. And when you close that, you'd repurpose it for something, that'd be a whole different planning process that you'd go through, like, what would you do with that building? And then if you were to offer full-day K, you would then have to add another 30,000 square feet to your existing elementary schools. Big concern, we haven't done the full feasibility, but you add 49 and 30, that's a lot of square footage to add to any of your elementary schools. So it'd be very challenging. Now, back through the bottom kind of decision tree. So close Spring City, fourth grade into flex, so now you're doing the K3, 4-6, build a 7-8, 9, 10-12. You would either renovate, add to eighth grade, very large number, or build new, even larger number. So some of these, they just economically don't make a lot of sense, but to be fair, we wanted to go through every one of them and kind of run it to ground, if you will. If you were to offer full-day K, you would have, obviously, the space at that point. Another even more exciting eye chart. All we did was take all those decisions and collapse them into a table. And I apologize, this is probably my engineering brain thinking, but let me just try to walk you through one. So renovate add, just like we went through the, the boxes. What's that cost? 17.4 million. Eighth-grade option, refresh or renovate to the existing building? The low end of that was the 30, the high end was 50, if you remember. What's the subtotal of those two decisions together? Just here is this plus this, or this plus this? 47 to 67 million for option 3A. 3B, new eighth grade, 81 to 87. 3C, the one that re-looks at the district and kind of changes the transitions. So that's renovate, add, close eighth grade. You'd still have to add some square footage. That's between 12 and 14 million. Your total decision up to this point would be between 29 and 32 million. Then you have the full-day K decision, and then you have a total, if you were to choose this whole path, and then add it all together, we have a low, high, and then I put a midpoint in here. Why the midpoint? Because it's just so many numbers already? And, you know, we're talking about a lot of uncertainty here. This is, these are charts for decision-making purposes. Not to say we have it all figured out. That would be totally not true. We're just level-setting everything and looking at how things would cost in the future, using today's dollars. So one of the things that we did to just make it a little more usable was, let's just look at the things that are economically feasible. So I just lined out the ones that were very expensive. And you really come down to kinda four different options. I'm not saying those are, I'm making any of those decisions for the board, but just from an economic standpoint, those seem to make the most sense. And I just point towards the midpoint, because, again, the ranges, you don't, a lot of unknowns. You don't know where you'd be in that range. So back to these decision-matrixes. Now, everybody's relatively good with that? Yeah, excellent. So all I did, all we did now was put the advantages and disadvantages to each one of these options. This is by no means exhaustive. There are tons more advantages and disadvantages. All we did was pick out the high-level ones that were obvious. And you would probably add a whole bunch more to this. But, sorry, that was a little wake-up. Let's go through the very, the very first one. Renovate add, maintain your existing grade structure, refresh or renovate eighth grade, and then you have this full-day K that would require no major construction. So advantages of taking this pathway, you keep your neighborhood school. You don't need additional space in the future for full-day K, using information we know now. Remember, I'm projecting pretty far in the future here. And it may not require redistricting until this decision is made. We haven't talked a lot about that. I could unpack that more. But whenever you're gonna close Spring City, you gotta redistrict immediately. If you were then going to close eighth grade, you may have to redistrict again if you, so there's like a lot of different moving parts here. But I'm just picking out the high-level ones. Disadvantages, doesn't reduce the number of school transitions for students. I'm not sure if that's a priority or not. We were gonna, I was gonna do some exercises and kinda flush that out, but I'm just gonna assume that maybe that would be beneficial. Seems to be in other districts. Significant investment into a 90-year-old building. So remember, I, I circled eighth-grade center. Not saying that that's good or bad. There's plenty of 90-year-old buildings that get rehabbed, and they work just fine. I'm just saying that, that's true. You'd be investing a lot of money into a 90-year-old building. Total investment is higher than other options, and you guys can look at that big chart and kinda see where that lands. Likely redistricting would not be, would be needed to implement full-day K. So, yeah, so once you get here, you're gonna redistrict, no matter what. So now we have a 3B on that chart. So all we're doing is taking and hiding all those other decision pieces that you see on the big chart, and just kinda walking you through. So this is renovate add, maintain current, demolish and build new for eighth-grade center, full-day K. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, because it's expensive. You know, it's, it's, when you're building new for a building, it's gonna be expensive. So very, very big number, but the demolish and build new is between 64 and 70 million, depending on a lot of factors. Option 3C, this one I will spend a little bit of time on, because it's one of the ones that, that was circled as a potentially smart option. So this is renovate add to Spring City, reconfigure into K5, 6-8, 9, 10-12. That would sunset the eighth-grade building. And then at some future, if you wanted to add full-day K, you would still need 30,000 square feet. So the advantages of this is, obviously, it keeps a neighborhood school. And if I were choosing between schools to close, you'd be closing a school that all students attend versus some students attend. To me, that's usually a win. Eliminates a 90-year-old building out of the portfolio. So if you look at all your buildings, eighth-grade center is kinda the one that sticks out. It doesn't look like the others. And we have a lot of information about that, and some feedback from the principals about what doesn't work as well. So that may not be a, that may be a good advantage. The redistricting at this point would probably, it would definitely need to be made at sunset of eighth grade. Because remember, to do that, you need to take advantage of all the space in all the elementary schools. So redistricting is, again, not fun for anyone. It is potentially the lowest-cost option. Obviously, you're sunsetting a building, you're avoiding some costs that's out there. Some of the disadvantages, the buildings may feel a little tight, because we've done workshops with all the principals, and even as the buildings sit now, some of them feel tight. Now, when you redistrict and move some of those students to some of the lesser-used buildings, that will probably free up. But I'm just throwing it out there, because that's true. Educational program would have to be realigned, because think about it, now you don't have a K4. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't-
Yeah, no, please.
We're not used to just, like, jumping in.
I don't love to hear myself yap.
In the first, like, in earlier, where you were talking about the timeline of our census. So approximately, how many years would that feel tight for? Right? Like, until things drop off?
Well, yeah, because you're, couple moving parts. Good question. By saying it may feel tight, doesn't mean it is. Like, when we looked at, we've looked at all your buildings and how they could optimally operate, there might be some perception that, hey, we're getting more kids, and I'm concerned about that. But if you reconfigure the building a little bit to make it a little more usable, I think that goes away. But there could still be a perception there, because a, a building that only had X number of students that, that we felt was a little underutilized gets more students. It's a perception in many cases. But the other piece of that is, is, yeah, you do have a, a kind of trailing, diminishing population, so, yeah, that would also solve for itself.
That was my thought process, that it might be temporarily a feeling of tight, and then be more what we would like-
Yeah, and remember, we, we haven't, like, really put a time scale to this, so think about it. If it's, I'm not saying this happens tomorrow, it couldn't happen tomorrow, because you're talking about years out there. So if you look on that population scale, you're not losing kids super fast, but just the general population's having less kids. So that's, that's affecting that, that tail end, that three, five, seven years out. I, I think that goes away completely. That's a great observation.
Can I, just, again, sorry, clarifying question in general, that doesn't necessarily have to do with this slide, but just, how, how did we, this is a facilities discussion, and I completely respect the need to address the Spring City and the eighth grade. How did we get to a spot where we're talking about a full-day kindergarten? Because to me, that, that, while it may be relevant, it's hypothetical.
Hundred percent.
So why do we not, so, for a hypothetical decision-
Absolutely.
How did it make it into a facilities discussion? Because we could also illustrate, which would make the mapping even more complex, right? Hypothetical school for the arts, that's what we could build, right? So please help me understand how full-day kindergarten became an active part of this facility.
So I'll jump in there. The board tasked us with doing a full-day kindergarten presentation, knowing that it was on, at least on the radar of some board members. So the way this presentation was designed was for full-day K to be an add-on, not to be an integral part of it, so that this, some of this will be coming forward in February when we do the full-day K presentation as well. We didn't wanna do this whole thing, and then come back a month later and do the whole thing with full-day K. So we just, it's in the back of our minds as flexibility is an option. So that's why they're parceled out separately, eighth grades. They're all decisions individual, as if they were in silos, but they're all interconnected as well.
And I appreciate that additional context. I guess we can agree to disagree. To me, this is a facilities conversation that is real and not hypothetical. The fact that we're trying to do two birds with one stone and bring something in because a few board members want to, that, that has not been strategically discussed nor approved whatsoever, right? So I'll leave it there, but I'm just perplexed as to why it's a, it's an active part when the other two are real, right? So that's all.
Well, let's look at, everything that we're talking about is hypothetical. Everything up there.
Not necessarily.
This, it's, the timelines we're talking, we'll probably retire by the time this potentially happens. What occurred here is, when you start looking at one school, if you're gonna look at one What occurred here is when you start looking at one school, if you're gonna look at one school, just look at the district as a whole. That's all, that's all that's occurring here. There are no commitments to one item that's in that presentation other than to educate the board, educate the community, that this is a potential roadmap. We have much more deep dives to do across the board. But I understand your position, Mr. Schaefer, and I respect that.
Hello? Okay. No, hundred percent. And that's why it was not, it's like when I did the subtotals, it was really the first two decisions only. And then the latter one is just a what-if. So yeah, I, I'm sorry, like that, that was, that was the, the concept here. And I was, I certainly didn't want this to be a full-day K discussion. Absolutely not.
And that's sort of my point. Because whether it's intended or otherwise, or it's meant for some other reason to help facilitate the conversation about this hypothetical thing, it certainly appears as though that, because it's given just the same box and just the same portion of this conversation. And that's what's perplexing to me, that's all.
Yep. So 3D would be renovate, add, Spring City. Option would be Spring City. Here you'd be reconfiguring to K3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12. Very expensive options. So when you're renovating and adding to 7, 8, you're looking at 90 to 98 million dollars. So we didn't give it a lot of consideration because it's just expensive. 3E, same thing, except now you're building new for, you know, eighth-grade center. Even more expensive. This is just repeating those decision trees so you could see how it all fits together. So now we would go through the exact same thing for close. So close, maintain current configuration, refresh or renovate. And I don't even mention full-day K. So advantages. Saves the initial costs of refreshing, you know, Spring City. You do utilize the available excess capacity to close a building, which has some economic advantage. And you remain in your current grade structure, so no educational program modification. So you're doing what you've always done. Disadvantages are, you know, obviously closing a neighborhood school, redistricting right away because that would need to happen. If you were going to do full-day K, you'd have to redistrict again at the very far future. Doesn't reduce the grade transitions if that's of benefit to you. And there's again, significant investment into that 90-year-old building. Again, 1B is close, same configuration. Instead of refresh or renovate, you're, you're basically building a new eighth-grade center. Again, large number, 64 to 70 million dollars. Advantages, again, same ones for closing Spring City. Disadvantages, same disadvantages, except your cost is higher. So this is one of the ones we didn't spend a lot of time on, just it just seems economically not feasible. 1C, I did want to spend some time on. This would be closing both buildings, right? So close the building and redistrict, reconfigure, K5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12. When you do that, you will have used up all of your excess utilization, all of your excess capacity. And now you will have to build about 49,000 square feet of space. So you're, you'd be closing Spring City, you'd be closing eighth grade, but then you'd be building essentially another elementary school. So it's, it's kind of six and one-half, I had to use that term, but it's very similar to that. Except the one that you would build would be larger than Spring City. You would then obviously close eighth grade or repurpose it for something, and then there's the full-day K stuff. So advantages, you know, obviously you save the initial cost of Spring City. You use up all your excess capacity. You do eliminate the 90-year building, 90-year-old building, and you would reduce the transitions. Downside is you're closing a neighborhood school. You'd have to redistrict those students at the close of Spring City. But most likely, you'd have to redistrict them again when you closed eighth grade. There might be a way to like solve for both of those, but it might be tricky. It just depends on how all the pieces fall out. The one that I'm concerned about is it may not be technically feasible to add 50,000 square feet onto your existing buildings. So really what you would end up doing, if I were to run this out, would be close Spring City, demolish it, build a new Spring City of that size, and then redistrict everything. Is kind of how it makes the most sense in, in my brain. You would close the building and then, yeah, there'd be some other things if you did a full-day K in the future. So the disadvantages is obviously you close the neighborhood school. You might have two redistricting times, which is no fun. The technical feasibility is a little tough. Yeah, and then the, if you were not going to build a whole new school, if you were gonna try to build onto the existing, those buildings would be much larger. So, and you'd have to figure out where you could put that much square footage. So that would be technically challenging. Again, the buildings might feel tight because you're, now you're, you are definitely using all capacity at that point. And the last thing, this, this works for any grade realignment. So there would have to be some modifications to how you run programs. Because now the 5 is more part of the elementary school, school structure, and the 8 is part of flex, 6, 7, 8. Now that is a tradition, there's a lot of school districts that run that model, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12.
Could I ask a question here? So one of the key decision nodes in this tree is this future grade, potential for future grade reconfiguration. And I think in, you know, on the surface, I get it, right? Five, six, seven, run on different schedules.
Yes.
You know, the, the difference in, you know, the needs of a fifth grader are gonna be very different from the needs of a seventh grader. And yet we have them housed together. But I've also tended, and I'd be curious, Mr. Rizzo and Dr. G, your opinion on this. Like I've attended some special education meetings where we talk about, I know you said transitions aren't bad. But when I think about transitions and everything that I've heard about transitions, especially as it relates to our special needs students, it can be challenging. And not just for our special needs students, but even just, you know, students without special needs. And in this, you know, age 12 to 15, which is tumultuous at best for anyone. I would like to understand from Dr. G or Mr. Rizzo, like what are, what's the context behind this? Like what's the day-to-day? Like, so can you express to me the challenges of our current configuration to help inform us as to whether or not it really makes sense to reconfigure?
So I'll start overall, then you can chime in with respect to special education. You know, this is now my fourth year in the district. And as I, you know, I tend to come in and observe and kind of see what's going on before I start wanting to make some changes. And when I came here, one of the first things that I heard was that flex building, the 5, 6, 7, needs some attention for a couple of reasons. Number one, obviously there's 2,000 students in that building, that's a lot of students. The challenges are that you have an elementary model in one half of the building with fifth and sixth grade. And then you have a middle school model in seventh grade. They're on two different bell schedules. They have different start and end times. They essentially function as two separate buildings. It actually, it works almost as a transition, even though we're not going to count as a transition because we're under the same roof. And it, so just that one piece in itself creates some significant challenges that I know that we need to deal with. What I've heard from time to time again was that that is, that is a, a system that isn't functioning as well as it could. I think it's functioning the best that it can, given what it is, but I think some attention needs to be given to it. The second thing that I heard was given the, the vast and rapid growth of Springford 25 years ago, whatever the case may be, buildings were built and students were moved based on existing spaces and creating spaces and trying to keep up with the growth. Now that our growth is pretty much flatlined, the transitions really are an issue. So when we look at it, counting, coming into kindergarten, kindergarten is one transition. The typical K to 12 student at Springford is going to go through five separate transitions. Again, not including that sixth grade to seventh grade. The K, they're gonna have a transition at K, at 5, at 8, at 9, and then at the 10 through 12. That's a concern. Now, we've done a lot to mitigate that with what we put in place, just transitioning from one building to the next. But also with the house system from 5 through 12. Whereas even though a student's gonna go through in, you know, fifth, sixth, they're gonna go through the 5, 6 experience, then go into seventh grade, then go into eighth grade. They do have some consistency in terms of who they can access. It is still, it does still have an impact on the student's programming. So those two things, in my opinion, are what I think really drive the discussion. I think how we handle the 5, 6, 7 really is gonna help us determine what we do with grades, with Spring City and, and what we do with the elementary buildings. I do think that's a starting point in terms of where we go moving forward. Dr. G, I'll defer to you to speak to the, the program for special education.
Sure. And what I can add to that is some of our students in, in the district often start off in their home schools and they receive programming. And then through the, the evaluation process, sometimes the programming that is offered in their home building isn't adequate enough and doesn't have enough support. So we recommend that they go to a more of a regionalized program like a Limerick or UPE. That in itself right there presents with yet another transition in the middle of a child's second grade year. So in my opinion, when we were talking about this, less is always more. Because although we do a fantastic job of preparing for those transitions, even at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, having move-up days and having students visit the classrooms before they actually attend, changing at five times a year, possibly six for some students who change programs, seems a little excessive for students with special needs.
So I, I do think, well, and again, I want to make sure that our focus is, the, one of the early decisions we have to make is what we do about Spring City. But that is not a decision made in a silo. I think our discussion really is where, what do we think the 5, 6, 7 is? Because currently it is in elementary and a middle school, under different schedules, different educational philosophies. I think we have to make a decision whether it's going to be an elementary school, what you would call an intermediate school, 4th through 6th grade. Or whether we're going to commit to it being a middle school and have it be 6th through 8th grade. Either option, they need to be on the same bell schedule so that they can have some consistency for those couple of years. Once we make that decision determines whether or not we build a 7th and 8th grade center, whether we add on to our K to, or K to 3s or K to 5s or whatever we decide as a board to do. But I do think that all drives us to a, really a recommendation for what we're gonna do with Spring City, if that makes sense.
I have a question of the administration. Well, what consideration was given to other transitional groupings there? Was there consideration given to eighth, building onto the ninth grade for the eighth grade? Or is this the only one that you found that was feasible as far as a different configuration?
Well, interestingly enough, and I've lived this in other districts. Whenever you start talking about potential options, you could come up with an unlimited number of options in terms of what you add on to where and what you do and where you put this. The ones that seem to be the most practical and the most obvious ones are the ones we're talking about today. You could talk about iterations, but I think this checks at least the boxes for what we think is best for students right now. We could look at different options, but, but again, I think there are some core decisions about the 5, 6, 7 we need to discuss first.
Yeah, so we've actually crammed a lot of strategic planning into the first decision. And, and I don't know if that's good or bad. It's, I'm not sure yet. But when we looked at it, our take was you might need to see down the road a little bit and see what impact it would have. That's all.
Could I also just stop because we do have one board member that is on Zoom. Mrs. Zazowski, if she is still there. I just wanted to make sure she doesn't have any outstanding questions or comments.
I'm good right now. I'm just taking all of this in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oops. Oh, okay. Sorry, I was getting feedback. So then, you know, back to the, the whole decision tree. So this is close, build a K3. And, and there were some other kind of options that we had out there that we could have come up with, but they, they didn't make sense. Even the K3, when you get to renovating and adding to the 7, 8, the numbers get so large that they just don't seem economically feasible. And then the same thing for 1E. You know, now you're building a brand-new 7, 8, the numbers get even larger. So back to the big table. And the intent was, after I've walked through all of this, you may be able to read how this table looks, but maybe not. It's, it's probably the worst eye chart I've ever developed, so I apologize for that. I was planning on doing a little bit of facilitation and actually pairing this down into like three or four. But the, the room didn't really give me the opportunity to do that. So again, if I, if I did, you know, me alone pared it down, it does get a little less unruly. You know, you kind of have one, two, three, four options that seem to make sense. You could make it five if you wanted. And even those might be too many. So obviously there's, there's some next steps and, you know, you're not making any of those choices today. This is information-only. And, and I hope it's informative. You know, I hope it helps make an informed decision for Spring City because that was the intent. All this other stuff is really to help inform the Spring City decision. And we kind of rolled it out several different more steps. So if you were going to make a decision on Spring City, obviously there'd be some debate and some options and then an authorization to move forward. That's for later, not today. Did I lose everybody?
Any questions? I know that we were peppering you during the presentation, so there may not be any.
No, if, if I may. Back to Mr. Schaefer's point, and at the end of the day, it's a valid point. Just so we get a big picture understanding here. The timelines on here, the budgetary cost on here could stretch out three years from now, four years from now. What wasn't talked about here, and as a dumb engineer, we, I know where you're coming from. There is design, there is land, there is township approval. You're talking years just in that process there. The focus is Spring City. But when you have the conversation, you can broaden the discussion to include other parts of the district. Which doesn't commit us to one single item. This here, and there would be other conversations beyond this one, is to give the board, the community, a big-picture approach of what we're looking to do. When I started with this district back in '09 on the board, that was one of my driving concerns. Facilities maintenance and the condition of the buildings. We look at our buildings, we have buildings 90 years old where I always try to educate the board and community. This is no different than your house. So if you have a house right now and you're thinking about renovating it, or you're thinking about selling and buying new, is a parallel to what we're talking about here, just to try to keep it simplistic. Like I said, the numbers could change, everything could change. This was a presentation to start a discussion, and that's what we have here. I, I like what I saw. I have, I do have some questions. Whenever I hear the word redistrict, it's like you're getting ready to fight a bear. And how do you evaluate this one bite at a time? You know, Spring City is the focal point, everything else is on the periphery. Because those items on the periphery are a part of this district. And it would be disingenuous if we just didn't discuss it. When you're talking about new construction, you're talking about land. You're talking about when you, when you do this redesign, it's predicated on your square footage of what you have right now. Which could sway everything we're trying to do here. So I appreciate the effort that was put forth. I appreciate the presentation. I apologize because I think you had a different format in your head of how you wanted to present this. So I guarantee you, there will be other times that you could incorporate that. So I do thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I had a question going back, looking at the slide that has to do with the number of years since major renovations. And you had talked about 20, 20 years, we wanted to, you know, you want to start looking at a building being renovated. And with some of these options, we were talking about adding square footage, like going to other elementary schools, eliminating or renovating eighth grade. Does that kind of meet the needs, the immediate needs then of the renovation of all of our buildings that would be in need? And this might even be a question for Mr. Jackson. Because after, if we commit to one of these projects, it, that's not the end game. You know, we're always going to be looking for, we're always going to have to look at other renovations and things that need to be done. Would that hold us off for a while for another major renovation?
The quick answer is no, because we have maintenance of facilities. So we will always continue with the tenure plan that we have developed to maintain the buildings. As far as new construction, you should constantly be looking at, looking down the road. You never want to get caught that all of a sudden now we have to go build something. We haven't planned for it financially. So it's part of looking at the future from a budgetary standpoint for the impact to the district and thus at some point, impact to the overall, overall community. So you want to be looking down the road. So Spring City would, depends on which option that the board takes, it would impacted, impact the district to some extent. I don't know right now what that would be. I'm not the paid consultant, I'm just a happy volunteer here. But you can add on to that if you want.
Yeah, you can think of it like budgeting. So that's what I tell people, when you budget for 10 years, well, guess what? Once one year goes, you got to push that out one more year. So you're always kind of chasing kind of the facilities. Now, when you have a newly renovated facility, you know, for a good 10 years, it's pretty good. Now that's the renovate the whole thing or build new. And that's what happened. You can see kind of this line almost. You can see there was renovations called this year zero, and they kind of occurred at the same time. So there must have been a big population boom at some point here, and that drove all these decisions and everything else. And, you know, ideally, you have them kind of staggered so that you're kind of addressing one at a time, but that's not how population booms happen sometimes. They happen all at once, maybe a whole bunch of farmland was sold and everybody wanted to move here. And that, that kind of set you up, as you can see, where all your facilities are kind of aging at the same time, unfortunately. You know, now you enjoy kind of not investing much in the early years, but hopefully, you're putting some aside, so when it starts to hit out here, you have some money to invest, like you have. You know, the district's done a great job doing that. And then once you get here, like Mr. Jackson was saying, boy, if you're not doing anything now, you're gonna, you're gonna get even further behind. You can just think of it, like you said, the house is a great analogy. You know, same thing. You gotta put, every 30 years, you gotta put some money in your house, right? Every 25 years, every however many years. And that's not just like updating the, you know, the kitchen or something. There's a lot of infrastructure that goes with that.
Sorry. Right, and I understand that and I appreciate that, but I'm just wondering if it's going to kind of, with these renovations, kind of like restart some of those things, like I see Royers Ford there and Oaks Elementary that are just, would be potentially in some of these adjusted? Or is it like, oh yeah, and on top of this, we also now need to be doing those renovations?
Thank you, that was a much better, yeah, I get it now. So, yeah, so Spring City, so let's say you renovate ad, you're basically gonna renovate that building. So you're gonna go all the way back to the beginning and then move from there. You know, eighth grade, if you did that whole renovation, yeah, you would start the clock over, the big renovation, or the build new, any of those, starts the clock over. For some of the other ones, there's, there's parts and pieces being addressed, and Mr. Hunter's addressing a lot in his annual plan, and that, that maybe doesn't restart the whole thing, but some of the subsystems get reset. So you think about like HVAC, you know, it's a big dollar item. About every 20 to 25 years, that's about when they're starting to fail, you know? And some earlier, depending on your main, there's all kinds of factors, but, you know, that's about the rule of thumb. That's why I say at 20 years, a district really needs to be thinking and planning for what they're going to do so they have time to save or whatever they're going to do to financially be prepared for that. And then by 25, you're, you know, you're kind of, you're kind of acting, you know, you're starting to make some decisions. Could be 30, these are not hard and fast numbers. These are averages, they're rules of thumb. You have a great maintenance program, so you can keep things living longer. So, you know, all those things factor in. But yes.
Yeah, so we've been talking about Spring City, eighth grade mostly in this discussion, but there's the construction project going on right now, which includes major HVAC renovation at Limerick Elementary, major HVAC at Royers Ford. So a lot of that, and electrical upgrades, a lot of that is being addressed in that project. In addition to, Mr. Hunter has his annual maintenance budget, which is separate from those renovations, and that's where you see things like unit event replacements at Oaks and some other, other projects. So all of that is really kind of touched on in that tenure plan that was, I think it was presented back in September, right?
Yeah. Mr. Hunter?
And one thing I think also, just to make note of, the investments that we're making over the next 10 years with our Useful Life, our Giza Project, you know, we're roughly $80 million at the end of the 10-year span for that. So that, all those components that are getting, the systems that are getting replaced, it reduces, you know, when that renovation does come around, it does not put you in a full renovation where you're replacing all the equipment. So it could be more aesthetics, classrooms, casework, flooring, stuff like that, bathroom renovations, but for the most part, you know, we're addressing the critical components over the next 10 years and then ultimately, you know, decisions are made for renovations, but that's 10 years out. So as we go through our tenure plan, we'll certainly be looking and forecasting years in advance, so we'll be able to pick that up. We have rough draft of what the next 10 years look like, but ultimately, a lot of decisions being made from, from this point moving forward kind of steers the district as to what 10 years from now is going to look like.
Do those recent plans that we're working on, like you mentioned the HVAC at Limerick, because when I'm looking at Slide 6 and the EFCI score, so will those improvements that we've already approved affect the score?
Yes. This is not, it just doesn't account for those. I was going to go there, so yeah, so.
Because to continue my question that that brings up, because if you look at the current EFCI scores on Slide 6, you have Limerick Elementary and the eighth grade center at the same mark, but we're not talking about Limerick at all.
Right, but Limerick, if you remember, is getting addressed. Yeah, so, so it's not updated for what is going to be done yet, it's just, it's just for what was at that snapshot. But this is a great place to talk or to answer that question that came up earlier. So as you invest money, these bars go down. So like, let's say you renovate ad, Spring City, this would, this would go to zero. It'd be in perfect condition because you'd be done. And as these things get done, these are going to go down. And as this gets addressed, this will go down. And this is, this is a way to rack and stack buildings regardless of size. That's why we use it, is because it's the, the amount of money that needs to go in divided by what it would take to build that whole building again. So it's like a percent use of the building, bad term, but it's, it's a way that you can score them all evenly.
See, part of the challenge, let me real quick, part of the challenge here, we're trying to develop a plan. Concurrent with that is your townships developing plans. That's a development in Upper Providence, Park House could shake this, shake the trees out of this. So what we're doing here is planning, that's all it is, planning, budgeting, and taking that data and communicating that to the board, to the administration and to the community so everybody has a clear cut understanding of what we're trying to do. We could go left or right or straight, but this is just a big plan here.
Park House would be an over 55 community?
It's, it's, but, but however, however it eventually evolves based on my sources, all of the, all of these townships are addressing their needs, which is allowing developments. And we're doing the same thing that they're doing. They're planning for potential growth, we're planning for potential growth, would be impacted by, based on their growth. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. I was just looking at the agenda, so are we going into board comment now or is this questions? Still in the presentation?
Still Q and A.
All right, so then, well then I'll reserve my comments till the end. But I do have sort of, again, it's a clarifying question just on how the information is presented. It appears we're using the term neighborhood school to describe Spring City. I Googled, I don't understand what this notion of neighborhood school is, that's part A of that question, and because it's, it seems like it's presenting it as a negative if we're closing a neighborhood school. That's part A. Part B is if neighborhood schools are good, because it appears if it's a negative, we're closing it, do we have, are all of our elementary schools neighborhood schools? And if, if they're not, then that means we don't have an equitable elementary program. So if somebody could clarify why neighborhood school was even utilized in this?
I would just say, in my experience, it's a fairly universally accepted term whenever we talk about elementary schools and its accessibility to the school. That's the only reason why it was used that way. Not having it there, they would be leaving their own community, they would be leaving the Spring City community to go to another school, I think is probably why we use that term, they're leaving the Spring City neighborhood, so to speak. Beyond that, it's not necessarily a term intended to, intended to sway one way or the other or bring in bias, it's just, it's just a term that I've used in the years that I've been part of projects.
And I appreciate that. That's, you know, because we, we don't inclusively have neighborhood schools here. So we have students presently, and I don't hear, I haven't at least in my three terms on the board, heard anyone complain that a resident from one community, if you would, Montclair, goes to an elementary school that's not located in that township or borough, right? So I'm not sure, I mean, the Springford District is a small community, all things considered, my opinion as one board member, so I just struggle with, with that. I'll wait for the board comment then for my other things. Thank you.
What other questions do we have for our presenters, if any?
I have a, I'm not sure, since I did step away, if this question, I don't think it's for ICS, but more so for administration. Did we talk about why, like the ins and outs of why there's a certain plan preferred by administration? Did you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I touched upon it. I think as I came in here, there are some, there are some kind of big, big items that I think we need to address, the number of transitions, the way the five, six, seven is configured. I think those are two big things. So for me in making decisions, looking at the 10 options that were presented today, my lens is what deals with those couple of issues and what is feasible from a financial standpoint. I don't, and we left options up there, but I feel like I have a hard time making a recommendation to add a $120 million building. I have a hard time making that recommendation. But I do feel good about making recommendations that reduce transitions that thereby create a better experience for our students. So when we talk about what our recommendations are, it really is dealing with that, was it going to be an elementary, is the flex building going to be an elementary, is it going to be a middle school? And then the rest of the decisions kind of fall in line, even though Spring City's the first one. I just don't want to get those taken out of order, I want to make sure we're considering everything.
So is it correct in my notes that that would be 3C?
I believe that's the case, yes.
That is?
That's the renovate ad, Spring City, and then?
Do K through five, six through eight?
And again, I want to clarify that by saying that we are only looking at facilities at this point. There are other considerations, there's personnel considerations, there's transportation, there are things to consider, capacity at the elementary schools and when we do this. I think when we talk about Spring City, you know, we take action now, we're really talking about it being move-in rated by the 25, 26 school year, so that kind of gives you a sense of, of the earliest that anything really could occur. So we have to look at those enrollments and, and again, my team still needs to have more input on that. But yeah, overarching, I think my, the one that I would probably recommend at this point would be, would be the renovate ad at Spring, at Spring City and then, and then consider making that flex a sixth rated middle school model.
So I'm gonna go further on Mr. Schaefer's side on this. Our focus has to be Spring City. We can get wrapped around the axle on, other than very simple discussions. Spring City, from where I sit, when I hear the term renovation, we're talking about a complete gut. So you're, from where I sit, if you're talking about a complete gut, you're talking about moving kids throughout the district. Spring City is an old house, so are we just going to put a new coat of paint on a very old house? From an internal perspective, you have systems in that building that are older than everyone sitting at this table. So now we're going to take new technology and merge it with something that's 85 years old. Only thing I saw on Spring City was, was the recommendations. My concern with doing renovations, are we just spending money on something that's very old, trying to make it new when it's not new? And then we're talking about building new in other parts of the district. I think we just, we have to be very careful with that as one board member's opinion on this. I think we need to drill down in Spring City. My concern with renovations just is you're renovating an old house, that's all we're doing, and I just can't get behind that.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I forgot one, I said Madam President. Again, I've never been called Madam President, and I'm upset about that. The, right, thank you. One more clarifying question, is the Spring City Elementary School, and I truly do not know this, but I recall hearing it, is it actually located in our school district?
Yes, it is. It crosses into Chester County, so it's partially in Montgomery County, partially in Chester County.
So do we, so it's, O and J has a portion of it, is that correct? That's the neighboring district?
That would, that's the neighboring district, correct.
All right, thanks. I mean, I just, again, for the public and also my colleagues on the board, that to me is sort of an interesting thing. That entire property does not even actually all belong to us, so, or I mean, or it's not all within the jurisdiction of the Springford School District. So just a piece of information.
To clarify, isn't all of Spring City Chester County? But you're just talking about the district piece.
I can, I can answer that if you want. I mean, we're, we're doing the site analysis right now, it's in East Vincent Township, the building itself and the site, but the borough and part of Royers Ford, that's what, you know, mentioning the Montgomery County piece, go into Spring City. So you have students from both that Chester County side, you know, Spring City borough, going into East Vincent Town, the, the building which is in East Vincent.
You want to see if they want to split the cost with us?
I'm just wondering. I mean, listen, that was before all of us, right? But I'm just saying, as this topic is being brought up, it's just very interesting that that's a unique piece.
One other quick question, which I know at one of these slides, it, actually it's on the slide, it was outlined. So when we talk about educational parity, the way that I was thinking about that, and facilities parity, the way I'm thinking about that is, you know, largely like some of those sub bullet points that you have up there in terms of, like Spring City does not have dedicated rooms for specials. Is there anything else? Is there anything else that falls into that definition of, you know, Spring City lacking educational parity from a facilities perspective right now?
It's mostly around the specials, the SGI's and the LGI, large group instruction, small group instruction spaces. So other, other buildings have them, they don't. That's, that's really it. The classrooms, there's no, no issue with the classrooms at all.
You know, we have to remember that I've been in this district since 98, 1998, give or take. It has grown beyond any planning. You've had boards that made decisions based on a given technology, based on their knowledge. So some of the things we, we sit here and we, and I use a soft term, complain about or sort of vilify, they, they made decisions based on that time as what they thought was the right thing to do. You know, we hear five, six, seven, I was never crazy about it, but I understand the rationale for why they did it at that time. So I just ask that we, when we move forward on this, what we have right now is what we have for whatever reason from that point in time, and we just tried to make it the best we can make it for the here and the now, and why it was done back then, that's what they thought that was the best thing to do.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, I apologize if you think my question was rude.
Oh, no, no, not you.
And pointing fingers at a previous board 20 years ago, that was not the case. It was simply to understand the definition of educational parity. What outside of that is Spring City lacking from a space perspective? However, Mrs. Zazowski just texted me, she does have her hand raised, so we'll go to Mrs. Zazowski.
Hi, everybody. So I just, I heard, I know that in the presentation, ICS went into discussion about the potential down the road, potential maybe kindergarten, full day kindergarten. I know that Mr. Schaefer was saying that there really hasn't been a direction for that, so perhaps that shouldn't be included here, and Mr. Jackson referring to the fact that we should focus on Spring City. My issue with, with that per se is that with the financial impact that this is going to, that this- going to, that this focus on Spring City, or just redistricting, or just putting these grade levels around, what have you, I, I think I need to understand what the full impact is. And if that's on the horizon, which I've heard chatter about, I think that it's something that, you know, maybe as, if there are five people on the board that want to give it that, that attention, that maybe we do need to look at that model and not purely focus or narrowly focus on just Spring City, because that, that could really blow things up for us. If we do all of this work, spend a tremendous amount of time, effort, money, doing what we're doing with Spring City and, and the other grade levels, and not consider that, and then that, that comes down the road next, that could be a problem. So I think it's maybe just trying to be forward, or, or, you know, kind of thinking into the future a little bit, that one could be coming. That's, that's just my thought on that. I was actually glad to see that that was a consideration in, in all of this, and just a consideration, I realize this is just the beginning steps, so, thank you.
No, my statements, my statements are based on, this is a lot of information to swallow, right? Right now, a lot of people are drinking from a fire hose. Spring City is a focus, as I mentioned earlier. However, everything else is on the table for discussion. It is not saying we focus strictly on, on Spring City. We have not approached that on anything we've done here from a facilities perspective. Spring City is our focus, we're looking at everything else, but, and I will say this very kindly, this board, myself, don't have the capability to look at this much larger. You will get lost in the data that is required to make a sound decision, even from a financial perspective. The numbers that ICS is, is given is based on institutional knowledge and today's cost. Items we're talking about here are five, 10 years down the road. So they can give budgetary numbers, but it's a, it's a budgetary number, and that, that's all it really is. Spring City is what's on the horizon, and there are four options that have been presented, and that's what the board will be looking at, the administration have looked at it. They gave a soft endorsement of what they think, but that's really where we're at, trying to present this anymore, as you nicely put. Those, what's here is real simple, right? It's just mathematics. It, it's real simple, the numbers might scare you, but, you know, it's a, it's a 10,000 versus a million. The approach is still the same, back to your house. Spring City needs to be addressed the same way you address your house on a regular basis. So the, the, the focus here has to remain Spring City, or this is just going to become a lot of data that's being presented.
I have to say that I very much appreciate seeing the big picture. It's the first time that we really get a good look at the impact of Spring City, the impact of eighth grade, the impact of all day kindergarten. These are things that our community has talked about and is very aware of. So I think seeing that kindergarten, for me, is a big impact to, what, 500 families potentially every year, so that their kids can go to school all day, or they, they can make another, like you said, another decision, right? But I think that's really important for us to see what's happening, even at those construction levels. Like you said, I, you know, I'm guessing in the next few months, we'll see that reset, maybe like a future reset of the impact of the GISA dollars, right? So you'll see that movement on all of these charts, and I think that's important for everyone to see where that money's going, where the planning's going, and seeing this semi-long term, not really totally, you know, seeing this visually is fantastic, seeing the impact it will have on just giving those students what they should have, right? Like, no one, no one's going to argue that one elementary school should be different than the others, right? So I do think this was excellent, and I appreciate the way it was presented, and not all spreadsheets, so thank you for that.
I feel like we're petering on board comment here, but just want to make sure there are no final questions before we officially move on to board comment.
I think this is a question. I feel like when I looked at this information that was emailed to us, I had information about how long students would need to be redistricted and the numbers with the schools. I can't find that in my email anymore, like, did that get removed? Or, I mean, it may not be part of this discussion, but I do feel like that was helpful to me because you talk about redistricting being a, a difficult word, but then there's, the truth of the matter is with any of this, those kids while they're working on the school have to go somewhere, and the impact that has on the other kids at the other schools. So I don't, does anyone know where that is?
No, the, in the original presentation, when we just deep dived into the four options for Spring City, we actually had a timescale, I can get that to, that was in the original presentation. This had gotten so long, I, I kind of pulled out the, the constructive stuff, but happy to send you that.
Have like the breakdown with all the schools and the kids and where, okay.
Well, it had, it had...
Or the number of students and who from...
It had the number of students that would need to be redistricted shortly, or...
Because it wouldn't just be the kids from, the students from Spring City, right? I think it showed that there may be movement, I may be getting ahead of my...
Well, yeah, the, two different things. So if you're going to renovate add to Spring City, we were suggesting, could you do an occupied renovation? It would be very difficult. We were, we were suggesting that those students would be relocated for a year to do the renovated add. If you were going to build new on that same site, it'd be two years, so...
But then there was talk that the current students at those schools where they would go, there would have to be a little, right? Is that, did I say that somewhere?
No, we could, we could, those buildings would be tight where you relocated the, the kids, unless you pushed them into all of the elementary schools, which is going to be transportation-wise problematic. So what we tried to do was figure out what are the closest buildings that they could go to, and then solve for, you know, how many kids could go to each one of those elementary schools and still be under like a 90% utilization. So, and yeah, and look, not, construction is, is never just a seamless path, you know, I mean, no matter how well it goes. So we, we did recommend, you know, maybe relocating students during that time.
So can I clarify something on that redistribution? If I went to Spring City Elementary and we were closing that, and you said, hey, you can go, now go to Oaks, right? Would that move kids from Oaks somewhere else potentially?
So those are two different things. So one was just moving the kids during construction. Now, closing the building, we would recommend redistricting, because you can't just push them into the near ones, you actually have to push some of the other kids into some of the lesser utilized elementary schools, and then kind of domino effect it out of Spring City. I don't know if that makes sense.
It's a much bigger impact than just those Spring City families.
It is, it's actually to affect, it would affect everyone, without a doubt.
And some of those, if I remember correctly, was, oh, sorry, 12 to 24 months, and then redistrict again?
So, yeah, so that's where it gets tricky. So, okay, so if you closed that building, yeah, you would redistrict all those children so that you would make all of your buildings equally utilized. So that would be the goal. It doesn't mean everybody moves somewhere, but maybe 10%, 20% of the whole student population might be affected. Those numbers are rough, rough thumb right now. Then what I was saying may get redistricted again. If you chose down the road to close eighth grade center, I don't know if those same catchments would solve for that. And I, I don't know if you understand what I mean, but like, there, there might be more concentrations of children that are not just K5, that get, that move into the mix. So you may have to move the boundaries just a little bit more if you were going to choose to close eighth grade.
And, and plus, we now have a lot of new construction coming in, so you don't know the numbers on that. So this, that's really a math game when it gets close to it, twice.
Absolutely. I caveat this with, this is today's information, and I always recommend you continue to do demographic studies every three years, because as Mr. Jackson said, there's a big development that may get permitted. Now, we don't have things that are not permitted yet. You know, if, if it's just an idea, we don't bake it into the cake, but when somebody says you can build this, we then bake it into the cake, yeah.
How deep was the die for an occupied renovation?
You know, we, we looked at it a little bit, it, it's possible. It's just going to extend the timeline, because remember, we're adding space, so whenever you're adding space, you build your lifeboat, you know, you build that extra space, and then you move the kids around, so it can be done. It will extend the time period, and the site is a little bit tight. So the lay down area, and you, I know you know construction, but all that area you need to build stuff eats up a lot of the playground space and parking space, and it just, it can be done. Bill's probably going, please don't do that, but it can be done.
Well, we, we do it in New York all the time.
Oh, well, yeah.
There's no room.
There's nowhere to go.
Yeah, we do it all the time, because just by, just with the board's knowledge, you know, that would eliminate any discussions regarding redistricting. That, I'm just, that just has all kind of issues dealt with it. And an occupied renovation is doable, do it all the time. There are pros and cons to that, but that does eliminate some of the issues, because I'm sure their parents are hearing the word redistricting, and their, their heads getting ready to explode, so I think we, we need to really look at that, see the pros and cons with that also.
Yeah, and, and actually, we did dig into that, it is possible, and it just makes the site tight, but if we dug in more, you know, there's always a way to solve the problem. We're a bunch of engineers, that's what we do.
Yeah, so, so Clinton, just two, two points I want to make. We, we worked with the construction group, right, to, to look at occupied renovation versus relocating. Honestly, we, we thought it was more of a disturbance to the students to do the occupied renovation at Spring City. You could do it, it would be challenging, and, and Bill could probably speak to that a little bit more. Back to the other point about the renovation in addition, and the temporary relocation of the students, we had talked about relocating students to Brook and Royersford temporarily during that one year, the 24, 25 school year. And that would put those, those schools at 95% utilization, so it would be tight, but it would be doable for one year, at least that was, you know, our, our conceptual look at that at this point.
Did I read that sheet correctly, in that that would involve some Brook students moving and Royersford students moving as well?
It, it would just involve the Spring City students moving into, like, about 75 students going into Brook, and about 98 or about 100 going into Royersford.
Yeah, just moving them temporarily.
For the one year.
Yeah, not, not moving everybody. And, and it's, back to Mr. Jackson's point, it's kind of pick your poison, so is that more of an inconvenience, or is the occupied renovation? So it's, if, if we were going to deep dive into that, that's fine, give us the direction, and we'll come up with a plan, and then you can evaluate those two plans versus one another. And then we'll, it won't be as extensive as this, and we could put together like the pros and cons and all, all that. I mean, we really do try to break it down and make it somewhat visual, somewhat pro and con, and just hit the high points for decision-making purposes, and then we solve for all the technical problems in the design and implementation.
Quick question. The renovation is extensive on the HVAC side of the building system side?
I'm sorry, for Spring City?
Yeah.
It's, it's a total renovate, it's a gut renovate, yeah. So when, not the refresh, remember, the refresh is all the systems and the roofing and everything else. The renovation, the 17-4, that's kind of the gut renovate.
So the only issue with a occupied renovation is time. It's time and some disturbance noise. Okay, all right, thank you.
And we, we've done it, we've done it, you know, we've done it next door, we've done it at North Penn. I mean, it's not impossible, it just, you know, you gotta, you gotta deal with some of the inconveniences, you know, but we can do it safely, absolutely.
Just, just to add to the comment about occupied renovation, so we, we did do a schedule analysis of that as, as part of our, you know, review of Spring City. We feel that would, one, extend the timeline because it's multiple moves, two, you, you have to be cognizant of the educational impact, and there would be an increased cost because the contractors are going to have to plan for that. So it's not impossible, it can be done, but, you know, the, our recommendation would be to move the students. Now, when I did the Spring City renovation in 93, we were able to do that. We were able to move the students for a period of one year, they went to additional buildings, and that accelerated the timeline of construction, reduced the educational impact to the students, and, and reduced the cost of that renovation as well.
Could you share that analysis with the board? You said you did a schedule analysis?
Sure.
For occupied?
Yeah, it extended the timeline of construction by about six months, if I remember correctly, but we'll, we'll share that with you certainly.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we could look at like a phasing plan to how that would make sense, so we'll, we'll share all that detail with you, because like I said before, it's kind of, kind of pick your inconvenience, if you will.
I'm so sorry, I've definitely out, done my clarifying questions, but I have one more, it'll be brief. So back to, again, this is clarifying on how this information is being presented. So option, closing Spring City, for example, do, why are we not presenting the financial gain of perhaps selling that property? We're looking at all the expenses, but I'm just curious, because we, if we closed it, right, theoretically, we could put it up for sale, given that some of it's not even in our district as well. Again, just a clarifying question as to why that was not presented.
That was not part of their scope.
Okay. But I think it's fair to say that, that maybe we should consider that as, for us, as we move forward, that there, there may be a, a financial gain, even though we're going to have to certainly continually invest, right?
Everything's on the table for discussion, and that's one of them.
Yeah, you, you would probably say the same thing about eighth grade too, right? You, you could, you could repurpose or, you know, but we, like Mr. Jackson said, we, we didn't go that far, it'd be hard for us to speculate what you would do with that property.
And I, I think there's just, again, there's a difference between the eighth grade property, given that it's adjacent to the, you know, it's right, and one that's partially not even in our district, that's all. Thanks.
I have one, this is really simple. What is the parking lot follow-up? Or was that just on a, was that for the, is that...
So, when I originally envisioned this, we were going to do a handful of exercises to kind of help, help me understand what's really important priority-wise and transitions and grades.
Not an actual parking lot, but that, I'm in there, so we don't do these kinds of things.
In, in my wrap-up too, one of the questions I was going to have is, do you feel like you need more information to make a good decision on Spring City? And if so, I was going to put that in the parking lot? And then when I come back...
Has the parking lot evaluation been done for Spring City?
No, no.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I'm like, there's a parking lot, it's clearly an issue.
That's, that's parking lot for questions that, that I couldn't answer right on the spot, I apologize.
As a bedside clinician, that is not a term that we use, thank you.
What other questions do we have before going on to board comment? Colleen, are you good? Mrs. Zowsky? Okay, wonderful. Mr. Schaefer, I know that you were reserving something for board comment, or was that addressed already?
Haven't we heard enough from me? Thank you. I'll be, just a few things for, I guess mostly for my colleagues on the board for consideration, as we're looking at all of this, right? The first is, you know, certainly the economic conditions that we presently find ourselves in, and I won't go into the details, but, you know, all of the, seemingly a lot of these options included some significant financial impact to the community. So I just wanted to note that, not that anyone on the board doesn't think about that. But the, the second is, enrollment in general is a two-part comment. Number one, there's, there's a, I mean, you can find it first page of Google, the, the topic, public education enrollment has, is on a decline, pretty significant considering the, the, the length of, of being, you know, offering public education in the United States. Specifically in Pennsylvania, there's, we're at a, it's a 3% drop since 2020. And so just, again, consider that as we're looking at future projections, and, and, you know, the increase in virtual schooling, the technologies, and the, the spike that COVID sort of, I, I would say helped, it, you know, has led to, to some of that, so... And then my, my, my final piece on enrollment is, even though I, I have clearly shared that I didn't think bringing up full day kindergarten was appropriate during this conversation, I do continually struggle with, you know, we, we perpetually utilize Springfield, and, you know, as an attractive district, right? Which is why, you know, families have moved in here and developers want to develop, and yet we have no full day kindergarten. So for some reason, there's this conversation around full, full day kindergarten somehow making its way into here, and, and we don't have it, yet we're so attractive. So that's, that's a perplexing issue for me. So that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other board comment?
So I understand that the purpose of today was for...
So I understand that the purpose of today was for us to have that big picture of the financial impact around some of these facilities that we have and the decisions that we will need to make in the future. But our mission includes educating students. The purpose of these facilities really is to provide the space for us to educate students. So when we make these decisions, I would like a part of our discussion to be around the educational impact, not only the financial impact, which is incredibly important, but what is the educational impact of these various decisions around closing a building, moving students, not having specials within a special classroom, having art on a cart, for example. What is the impact of these grade configurations? There's data, there's research, there are studies that have been done. I would like to have that information along with the financial impact so that we can all be educated about both pieces, including full day kindergarten. What is the educational impact, not only the financial impact moving forward?
I want to address that because I, I want to make sure, talk to, that we have the understanding here. This is not about financial impacts. None of this. This is not financial. Those numbers on there are about as real as a $15 bill. They're based on costs right now. This discussion was to look at the district. If we do this, does it impact that? What is the impact of that? What is the timeline involved with that impact? And how is it impacting the district as a whole? So the dollars, I, I don't want people to take the dollars and run with them. They came up with estimates based on the cost as of now. The portion that you, I'm thinking that's going to come from the administration. We're just dumb engineers in construction. We don't, that's not going to be addressed. What you're asking in here, this approach is going to be, what do we think is right for the district? That content, I think needs to come from the administration. Right?
And that's just what I'm asking for. When we have opportunities to make full decisions in the future, I would just like to have more information.
And back to Mr. Schaefer's point, when I first moved to this district, coming from the South, everyone had full day kindergarten. So when I got here, it was like, where's full day kindergarten? Well, we don't have it. Okay. I, I, I adapted to what's here. I think what was driving Mr. Schaefer's, um, pushback to some extent is we never hear comments of, um, any parents about full day kindergarten. I've been here 10 years. I could count the number of times, not that it's not needed, but it comes down to, we can address it and we made a presentation in September, I know you're smiling, Ms. Deardorff, 2019. And we gave a big picture presentation if we did full day kindergarten, potential cost impact to the administration and impact to the district. Kindergarten, a new kindergarten building? Now we gotta get land. So there are many components.
I think we're good. Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. We did not want this to be a full day kindergarten meeting conversation and we're going to have that. I mean, I get, I think we've done very good, but I think we're channeling down.
I just want to add one, one quick thing to answer what Dave had asked. Um, the all day kindergarten became a discussion at the, the Pennsylvania state level because 85% of Pennsylvania has all day kindergarten and Lower Marion just got it. So the numbers are changing. They're saying out of 500 districts, 434 offer it. And the reason you don't hear from the parents is because when their kid is going into kindergarten, they don't know what the school board is. They don't, they're not involved. They're not, I can tell you this from parents get through it. They go, we went to a district that had all day. The following year, my youngest went into kindergarten half day and it was incredibly inconvenient in terms of figuring out what to do with him. And I understand that comes from a lot of parents, but once you're out of it, it's not your problem anymore. So you move on. So it is something that parents have talked to me about. Um, and also my question part of this is, um, what is our next, what is the next steps?
If I could just regroup here, um, number one is I, I do think Mrs. Deardorff, I agree with you that, um, clearly we have differing viewpoints on full day kindergarten and that will be discussed when we present, have the presentation in February, correct? So I'm going to suggest that we just table that for right now in the interest of time. Um, points all well taken. Uh, the second thing is, uh, this is board comment. I wasn't expecting a question, but, uh, Mr. Rizzo, do you want to just share with us next steps? And then I want to go back to board comment because I know that Mrs. Zasowski does have a comment to make. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
So twice a month, we meet with ICS. When I say we, we, I mean, um, Mr. Fink, Mr. Hunter, uh, for a good period of time, Ms. Choi, both assistant superintendents, myself and the ICS team. And we talk about things. So we're meeting, we're scheduled for Monday morning, again, to talk about, we're going to unpack today and some of the takeaways from today's meeting and determine where to go next in terms of how to give the board the information that they need and continue to update them. So at this point, again, our focus still remains on making a decision for Spring City, uh, but we don't want you to, you know, mistakenly make a decision for Spring City and then after the facts say, oh, I wish I would have known, which is why we're having this sort of contextual discussion. So, um, our next step, sort of kind of unpack this Monday morning, determine, and then we'll stay in contact with, uh, certainly, well, with, with Mr. Jackson being in charge of both of those, uh, the chair of, um, both property and, and finance, um, to determine where we need to go and what goes into committee and what comes back to the board in terms of a full presentation.
Um, I'd like to go to Mrs. Zasowski for comment and then we can go to Dr. Wright.
Yeah. Just very briefly, I, I just want to say that I do appreciate also, as I think Swinegarde could put it and, and Mr. Rizzo just put it, this is, uh, maybe the first full presentation that we've gotten, looking at many of the factors. So I have a hard time just focusing on, on the Spring City piece, as I said earlier. And I know, Mr. Jackson, you're saying that these numbers are, are simply numbers, but I would hope that they, you know, in, in light of what's happening with inflation and such, that they will stay, um, of course they'll be fluid, but there would be maybe percentage increases that, that would be expected and that would be, we would be informed of as decisions are made. What I wouldn't want to see is us locked into contracts that then, um, could be reopened or it would be at a loss. I definitely would not want to see that, um, going down the road. I don't think that that is the path that, that we would take on this. But, you know, as Mr. Rizzo just very pointedly said, wouldn't want to make a decision about Spring City and then have something else come up later that we weren't aware of. So this high level, more global look at, at everything that we feel that we can, that we can possibly perceive coming towards us. I think this is a really good look at that. And, um, I appreciate everything that, um, Mr. Jackson, you've done as, as chair of those committees, Mr. Rizzo, your administrative team, ICS, all of that. Just want to give you a very sincere thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry, I'm not the air person, but I have certainly been attention here on Zoom. Appreciate the zoom use also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zasowski. Dr. Wright?
Thank you. Um, and I am, um, looking forward to give my board comment. I'm not particularly looking for a response to anything that I present here from any of the other boards or the administration. I'd first like to start by thanking, um, like Mrs. Zasowski, um, ICS and all the administrative team. Um, I know there's a lot of time throughout the week, throughout the months and years that they are putting toward focusing on this, um, when they have a lot on their plate and also to the committee with Mr. Jackson and the continued efforts where the hard work goes. I appreciate the fact that full day kindergarten was presented. That was, um, as a piece of it because it was something that several board members had, um, asked be considered and that, um, Mr. Rizzo and his team are looking at it just as if there were any other concerns or issues like a big sports workout center or something like that, that any of the board members wanted to be included in that. I'm sure if there was an interest that the, the admin team would also be considering that. Um, I respect the fact that this is focusing mainly on Spring City, but, um, I don't think we can do anything with the district in isolation. We have to look at how this impacts the district and the community as a whole. So, um, I think that's important to the, the focus beyond Spring City, that we don't, we do take advantage of that opportunity to look at the eighth grade center. And again, also on projects at the other elementary schools and the redistricting that is going to most likely have to occur with this. It looks as if, you know, I think we're going to, as a community, need to prepare for the idea of redistricting. Um, our school district has gone through this before. It's a very painful process because it's very personal to many people of the community. I, um, my impression from when it had occurred in the past was that the board and the administration took a lot of consideration into it, was tried to be very, um, aware of, of doing what was best for the families in the community. And I hope that, um, this board or the next board, um, also considers that and does it as carefully as it was done before. Um, I think that, uh, consideration of closing an elementary school, a neighborhood school or a community school, anytime that we remove a, a school from a community, that that has to be given serious consideration. Research has shown that community schools are very impactful and, um, I, I have not, I'm, I'm just part of a board, but I would have to be convinced as to why that would be in the best interest of, um, the Spring City community to do that. So, um, and as we narrow this down, which is, looks like, you know, we've got the very broad picture and I appreciate that. And I can see the transition even for how we got here from where at the committee level we were at. Um, and we, it looks like we are, have an avenue here now to even narrow this down even further. I appreciate that we are talking about things that we need to, to, uh, take a deeper dive into, um, such as the educational impact, such as, you know, other buildings and what we want to see as the future for this. So I look forward to that and the other questions that we bring and task. And I apologize in advance to the tasks that we're going to ask of ICS and the admin team, um, as we dive deeper into this. I also would, um, appreciate the feedback from the community with emailing school board members and things so that we can too, bring these things to the table. There's a lot here that wasn't covered. And I think th- these things are emotionally impactful when we're talking about spending a lot of money or changing redistricting in schools and nothing is a done deal. Nothing is decided. This is the opportunity to share concerns that we can have looked at and considered. So that was my board comment. Thank you, Mrs. Hermans.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Any other comment? Okay. With that said, we'll move on to.
Sorry, I just have one. I have a request. No, no, it's not a comment. It's just a request following up on what Dr. Wright said, even though she asked that no one else, but I'm an American. Um.
We, I think we are all Americans and it was not directed personally at you. It was regarding.
Thank you. I said that in a joking manner. I should, I should know who I'm speaking with. All right. Dr. Wright, you referenced research regarding community schools. Could you please share that research with me so I can learn? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Let's move on to the public to be heard section of our, um, of our agenda. And different from what may typically occur in a work, uh, working meeting or board meeting, voting meeting, is that we have publicly heard at the end on any topic. Uh, given the, um, agenda that we have put forth in, with approval from our solicitor, we are asking public to be heard on discussion items only. So if there is a desire to speak, please approach a podium with your name and your township of residence.
Uh, hello. My name's Kate Doyle. I live in Upper Providence. Um, I would like to thank, um, the, um, administration, the organization, as well as the board for providing this thorough review of the current, um, facility options that are on the table, most pressing, obviously, Spring City, as well as, um, the eighth grade center, the potential for full day kindergarten. I think those are, um, having that, I think we've all agreed that having that kind of big picture, 20,000 foot, whatever corporate term you want to use, um, was very informative as a, um, a parent, as well as a taxpayer in, uh, Spring Ford School District. Um, I appreciate, um, your addressing both the eighth grade center and full day kindergarten because, um, they will most likely play a role. If not full day kindergarten, definitely the eighth grade center. Um, I'm very excited to hear the discussion regarding the benefits of reducing the number of transitions that our students experience through this, um, their time here at Spring Ford School District. Um, I think there's a significant number of benefits, not only to, um, the students themselves with regarding their education, also regarding their opportunities for extracurriculars, um, even the community traffic. We all know what that Lewis Road is like on, um, on those mornings on weekdays. So, um, I, I do think that's something that's, uh, should be considered a very high priority because, um, I've heard a lot of, especially now that I'm, I have a student moving through, um, that those middle school years are as turbulent as, um, we all experienced them ourselves. And, um, that isolation that happens with a seventh grade and eighth grade and a ninth grade, house principals do play a great role. Um, but having no other familiar teachers, no other familiar students, class, um, neighbors, et cetera, um, and those physical changes, I think plays a huge impact, especially for the special, uh, students with any special education needs. Um, I also, um, feel quite passionate that I need to take a moment to ask if someone could possibly, and you don't have to respond to me, but maybe in some format, um, could you please provide further clarification to the community as well as the, the board members, that Spring Ford School District does include Spring City. Spring City is, when you look at Spring Ford School District, it is part of our community. It is actually the spring of Spring Ford. Um, we, we, many of us are Montgomery Towny, um, uh, taxpayers, et cetera. Um, but I, I see this visceral reaction to Spring City not being part of Spring Ford School District, but it is. Um, multiple school districts within Pennsylvania and even in Montgomery County have portions of their population from non, the majority county. Um, North Penn and Sauterton both have portions in Bucks County and Upper Perk, which is part of our, um, Western Technical Center, have portions in Bucks County. So if not done here today, it would be very beneficial to include in maybe one of your weekly updates, how we are spring forward and Spring City is part of the school district while not in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Hi, Diana Kirsch from Royersford. Um, just listening to the information today, it sounds to me like there's too much uncertainty about what the future looks like to commit to anything beyond Spring City. Um, we definitely need more information than just general headlines or general headings on the infrastructure improvements for that 17.4 million and then the 30 to 50 million for the eighth grade center. Um, also I think that every time we discuss the 17.4 million or the 30 to 50 million for eighth grade center, we need to have the full context of the financial picture, which includes the 25 million massive bond that was just taken out for the Giza project. I also think that it sounds to me there are more options than what are being presented here today that need to be explored. There are not infinite options, but there are more and they should all be explored. Also seeing that a building that's 90 years old means it's totally obsolete, has to be demolished and rebuilt again, is a little bit, um, outside of reality. I mean, there are buildings in Europe that are thousands of years old that people use every day. So this idea that like a 30, 50, 90 year old building has to be demoed and built again is, is just not, it's not accurate. Um, comparing, um, the level of investment on investing in a home versus a school district, also not exactly apples to oranges. So, um, don't even understand that comparison at all. They're not the same. We're talking about tens and tens of millions of dollars that others have, other people's money gets used to fund. And lastly, on the full day kindergarten, um, I understand that the, the statistic that was thrown out there was that 85% of the districts NPA have all day kindergarten, but I don't know that 85% of the districts are performing as well as this one. So I'm not really sure how, how that's totally relevant. Thank you.
Okay. Teresa Westwood, Upper Providence Elementary. Well, Upper Providence, those elementary is where my kids go, but Upper Providence. Uh, first, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really helpful. Um, I did really appreciate seeing the context of the decision more broadly. So agree with the point that Spring City is the near term, but there's a number of other things that are coming up. So as a taxpayer, it's helpful to see the full picture. Not that the decision here today is about all of those items, but just to see it in the options. I thought it was really well done. So thank you. Um, I agree with the point that was brought up around transitions. As someone has two elementary school age children, one of which is in fourth grade and about to make that transition into fifth, I'm nervous about it. She's young, you know, and to know that she's got to do it again and again, many more times in the next few years. in the next few years. I grew up going to elementary until sixth grade. It's really different, making a transition in middle school, just as an example, when you're 12 versus when you're 10. Doesn't seem like a lot of time, but it actually is in the maturity of a young child. The other piece around full decay, and I'll be excited to hear more of the presentation in February. I don't think you just do it because 85% of the school districts are doing it. It has to make sense for this district. It's a helpful statistic. You have to better understand, too, why are 85% of the school districts doing it? I can say, as someone that went through with two kids, two years apart, through that transition, I work full-time, my husband works full-time, you make it through. You're right. So what Karen said is, like, you make it through, you don't hear about it because you've moved past it. It's incredibly challenging, especially, you know, if you've, whether you have two parents working or not, maybe even if you have one parent, it's tough. It's really three hours of time, and then you have to arrange for before care, after care. It's more transitions for your child, by the way, and for you during the day, which can be challenging. All that said, I appreciate the presentation. I caution the board to think about the decision, hopefully holistically. It's helpful to also see some of the other renovations that are happening, but there's a lot of other investments that sound like are likely going to be made in decisions over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. I would like to clarify one statement as I worry about it being put out there and taken and run with by the community. I don't think anyone on this board, and I will speak clearly for me, I did not hear anyone on this board state that because a building is 90 years old, that it is obsolete and has to be demolished. I was one of the options that was presented to us for consideration, but I don't know that anyone has said that, and I want to put that out there, that no decision has been made with regards to that or is of the belief of that at this point. Any other announcements or final comments, Mr. Rizzo?
I just want to thank ICS for the opportunity to come and speak with us. I appreciate the team and how available they have been. So thank you to all. Thank you for coming out. I do apologize for a Saturday afternoon meeting, but it was important to unpack this, and sometimes Monday evenings can get kind of long as it is. So thank you all, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
One question totally outside this realm. Have we determined a graduation date? Because I've got a lot of parents that have asked me that.
Graduation date will be on the board meeting for approval in January. Yes, we have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
No move.